Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. We're calling our meeting to order at 9:21 on Thursday, April 6th, coming out of our recess from yesterday. We're very glad that you've joined us today to hear what the Department of Environmental Quality and the Environmental Quality Commission are up to. We have a series of informational items today. The first one being the water-related infrastructure and planning update. We know there's a tremendous amount going on with recent federal actions, and we need to consider that and what that's going to mean for the state of Oregon. So we will turn it over to our first presenters, Jennifer, Lynn, Ryan, and Deb. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair George and members of the commission. Let's see, Stephanie, if we could have our presentation, that would be wonderful.
Director Whitman.
Yes, Chair George, thank you. For the record, Richard Whitman, Oregon DEQ Director. Chair George, if I might have your indulgence, I want to introduce here Chandra Ferrari, who is our liaison from the Oregon Board of Forestry, has joined us, and Chandra is on the Oregon Board of Forestry, a relatively recent appointee to the Oregon Board of Forestry. Chandra has experience working for Tred Unlimited, and then more recently is head of, I may be promoting you, Chandra, I hope that's okay. In the Habitat Division of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. So I just wanted to briefly recognize Chandra. I think Commissioner Schlesser also participated briefly yesterday with the Board of Forestry. And so it's great to see the liaison function here again. And hopefully, the presentations this morning will be of interest to Chandra. Thanks, Chandra. Do you want to say a word or two?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Chair George, members of the commission, and Director Whitman. Thank you for the introduction and for allowing me the opportunity to engage with you for a few minutes this morning. I'm extremely appreciative of the opportunity to be the new liaison to the commission, and I look forward to learning more about the commission's work and Department of Environmental Qualities work, and of course, how our respective bodies can best collaborate to achieve our mutual goals for clean water and healthy landscapes and communities. And I recognize that there are some big shoes to fill here, as the previous liaisons had some pretty big roles in some big issues, including the finalization of the MOU between DEQ and Department of Forestry around their shared responsibilities around water quality. But of course, that effort does move into implementation now, and it's going to require the continued focus and leadership of both the commission and the board to ensure its success. So I look forward to engaging on that. And again, I really appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to you and really look forward to working with you all going forward. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Chandra. We are so pleased to have you with us here today and in your role as liaison. And please feel free to reach out to any one of us as our work moves forward. You're right, there's hard work getting the MOA done, but then that's when the real work begins, and that's what's speak for us now. So we look forward to having a lot of communication with you, and please feel free to let us know anytime that we can help.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, with that very important introduction underway, now we will turn it over to Jennifer Weigle.
Thank you, Chair George and members of the commission. Good morning. For the record, again, Jennifer Weigle, I'm the Water Quality Division Administrator here at DEQ. And this morning, as you know, we're going to be talking about water-related infrastructure funding. I'm going to kick things off, and I've got three other folks here with me who are going to help go through the meat of the presentation today. I've got Ryan Hoof, who's our Water Quality Legislative Analysis. I've got Deb Mylander, who's our Program Manager that oversees our On-Site Septic System Program. And I've also got Lynn Barlow, who manages our Clean Water State Revolving Fund program. I think it's, first of all, we're really excited to be able to talk about this today. There, as I think most everyone's aware, there's been an unprecedented amount of funding that has been made available, particularly in the water arena. So that's, it's very exciting. And I think it's also appropriate that we get to talk about this topic as it is the year of the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act. It's hard to believe, but it has been five decades, and there's been a lot of work that's been done. But there are also, I think, as I know, our commission really understands and appreciates, there's a lot of work left to be done. There's a lot of serious need in the area of infrastructure. We're going to talk about some of that today in terms of what DEQ can be expecting. And I'll also just note, and we're going to talk about this a little bit more detail. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of money that's coming to the states, and it also brings with it a lot of responsibility and a lot of thought that needs to be put into how to make the best use of these funds for our communities, for underserved communities, particularly that maybe haven't participated in some of our financing programs particularly. So there's a lot here that we're going to talk through. And so without further ado, I'm just going to spend a minute talking about a little bit more specifically on this next slide, how we're going to organize today's presentation. So first of all, there's, we're going to, there's been a few different funding sources. And so we're going to just give you a little bit of background in terms of where all the money's coming from and how it's arriving within DEQ. So one of those funding sources being the last legislative session, and some federal funds that came through that session, the American Rescue Plan Act. And then Deb Mylander is going to talk some about how some of those dollars are being used for the On-Site Septic System Repair and Replacement Programs. And then we're going to talk about the most recent funding source, which was the bipartisan infrastructure law funding, which was passed late last fall. And as part of that, then we're going to turn it over to Lynn, and she'll talk about how those monies are coming into the Clean Water State Revolving Fund program. And lastly, we'll wrap up with trying to just point out some themes around both opportunities and challenges that are, that are coming with these various funding sources and the program's efforts, and what we anticipate as things that we're going to need to address as we work to thoughtfully and strategically prepare to spend these funds. So with that, I will turn it over to Ryan Hoof.
Thanks, Jennifer. Good morning, Chair George. Can you hear me? Great. So yes, welcome or thank you, and good morning to the members of the commission as well. For the record, my name is Ryan Hoof. I'm the Policy Analyst and Legislative Analyst for Water Quality Programs here at the agency. So as Jennifer alluded to, we've organized the material for this presentation somewhat chronologically around those three key funding initiatives. And actually, Stephanie, if you could go to the next slide, please. We'll be describing these three funding initiatives that have been enacted over the past nine months or so. This slide is just meant to generally orient you and distinguish between these different funding streams. I'll then dive into them in a bit greater detail. As Jennifer suggested, tag teaming with a couple of our water quality managers, who will discuss two particular funding initiatives in greater detail. Individually, but certainly combined, these funding initiatives represent really a game changer in terms of addressing longstanding water investment deficiencies in Oregon and across the country. First, our state legislature, while balancing COVID response and related economic impacts, was able to close out the 2021 session last June by establishing a two-year budget that was significantly bolstered really by the infusion of the federal funds distributed as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. This act distributed approximately $2.6 billion in discretionary federal recovery funds to Oregon. These federal funds, combined with drastic improvements to the state's revenue forecast, allowed our legislature to address a variety of funding needs across the state, but really specifically included over $538 million in water-related spending. Second, we'll be scratching the surface of this monumental bipartisan infrastructure law, also known as the Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act, which President Biden signed into the law this past November. This law is officially set to take effect next month. It involves over $850 billion in spending, that's billion with a B, roughly $80 billion of which is for water infrastructure or water resources-related improvements. The third category that I want to mention is the recently enacted Federal Fiscal Year 2022 omnibus spending package that was just signed by President Biden in the middle of last month. I've included the federal budget bill in this overview because I want to highlight the return of earmark spending and to acknowledge some of the resulting investment and benefits to our state. Earmarks have been banned from federal budgets since about 2011, but have officially returned. And in this recent Federal Fiscal Year 22 funding package, Oregon received almost $200 million in funding for 149 different specific projects. Of these, about $30 billion of them went to 19 water-related projects in our state. The funding per project for these water projects ranged from $250,000 to, I think, close to $5 million for one of those projects. These included some drinking water projects, some irrigation canal improvement projects, but many were related to clean water infrastructure, including stormwater management improvements in Hood River, a water reuse project in Kalamit County, and seven wastewater treatment project improvement projects from Duffer to Brookings in many points around the state. I won't be spending any more time in this presentation talking about this particular funding category like I will with the others, but just wanted to mention this as an important new development related to infrastructure spending that's likely to continue to be a factor in upcoming federal budgets. Next slide, please. So regarding the 2021 to 2023 legislatively approved budget, of the $538 million in water-related investments that I mentioned, about 60% of that was directly supported by ARPA funding. These funds have a five-year time span before they need to be expended. A vast majority of this ARPA funding is routed through Business Oregon to support specifically identified projects at the local level. These include both wastewater and drinking water infrastructure upgrade or replacement projects involving over 40 different communities across the state, including over $70 million of which is directed to areas that are recovering from the 2020 wildfire events. A second on this list is the $15 million that are being directed to DEQ for onsite septic system repair and replacement assistance. In a couple of slides, after describing a little more the breadth of this funding, I'll be handing this over to the program to talk about in a bit greater detail. The third item on this list references a portion of our state's ARPA budget spending agreement that was provided to each senator, the state senator, with $4 million, and each state representative with $2 million in discretionary spending to direct towards eligible products, projects of their choosing. From this category, over $9 million has been identified that was directed towards water infrastructure projects or other activities with a potential water quality benefit. I won't be going through each line item on this list or on this table, but wanted to provide this just to demonstrate the range of ARPA funding activities that have an access to watershed health improvements. The other examples, just to mention briefly, want to note the $5 million to ODFW to support fish passage improvements, $3 million to Water Resources Department to improve surface and groundwater data collection efforts, $2 million to, also to WRD for launching a Well Abandonment Repair Replacement Fund, and $1 million for the state to support place-based planning, water planning efforts around the state. Next slide, please. About 40% of the 2021 legislature's water-related spending, that $538 million that I mentioned, is supported by non-ARPA funds. This includes about $95 million in lottery bond funding, $79 million in general fund investments, and $38 million in spending authority from other fund categories. A couple of caveats, this table is not exhaustive in identifying all water-related funding from the 2021 legislature. Didn't quite have enough room for that and didn't want to go into that much detail for you. And I also want to note that not all of the funding in this table is specifically dedicated for water-related projects. In particular, the top two line items there, the Special Projects Work Fund, which is administered by Business Oregon, received a combined $65 million in general fund and lottery fund bond backing to support low-cost financing to eligible municipalities for a range of planning, design, and construction work for utilities and facilities that are deemed essential for economic growth. This is a valuable program that supports water-related infrastructure as well as other infrastructure needs. Other recent state investments that do promise specific water quality-related benefits include $10 million to OWEB for riparian and upland restoration and water quality protection grants, $5 million to OWEB for floodplain restoration and reconnection grants, and $5 million to a combination of WRD, OWEB, and ODFW to help strengthen water planning and water equity efforts in our state. I also want to note that not included on this list are several million dollars in funding to help modernize Oregon's water management efforts. For example, DEQ has received general funds to initiate scoping efforts to develop a data platform that aims to integrate data across multiple databases and agencies, establishing a single interface to the public and to water resource decision makers. DEQ also received funding to modernize our loan management software systems that will help our Clean Water State Revolving Fund program operate more efficiently and effectively. And certainly not of least importance, but highlighted second to the last on this table, is the $2 million in general fund that the legislature distributed to DEQ to relaunch the On-Site Septic System Loan Program. So to talk about this in greater detail and distinguish between the $15 million in ARPA and this $2 million in general fund, I'll now hand it over to Deb to introduce herself and to talk about implementing those particular programs.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair George and commissioners. For the record, I'm Deb Mylander. I'm the On-Site Program Manager for DEQ. I've been at DEQ for two years now. It's the first opportunity I've had to talk with the commission. I'm based in Eugene, but I oversee the program statewide. And I'm really quite happy to be, have the opportunity to talk with you today about septic systems and funding. You know, when a septic system operates properly, it does a great job of wastewater treatment on-site. But when it doesn't, it causes a real close-to-home public health and water quality issue. It's not an exaggeration to say that I and my staff receive calls or emails every week from people who are desperate for funding for their septic systems. Can I have the next slide, please? So I'm going to be talking today about the two major programs for funding for septic systems. The first one is the On-Site Affordable Loan Program. And this was established in 2016 by the Oregon Legislature. And what that legislation does is it authorizes DEQ to issue grants to third parties for affordable loan programs to homeowners and small businesses. So the first part is the authorization that DEQ can do this activity of working with third parties. And the second piece is the funding. So I'll be talking a bit about that. So that's a separate allocation that happens each biennium. So this was established in 2016, and through a competitive process, Craft III was selected to administer the Affordable Loan Program since 2016. Craft III is a nonprofit lender, a community development financial institution. It's been a very popular program. Craft III works closely with both onsite agents at DEQ and with the counties and with homeowners to assist them in getting affordable loans. And they work with them, provide flexible terms, and even for borrowers who don't have perfect credit or have unusual income sources, they can often help them to get assistance. Between 2017 and 2020, the legislature allocated $1.7 million in general funds to Craft III through DEQ. And Craft III is able to leverage that for $3.6 million in loans. And those loans helped 180 homeowners in 28 counties. So pretty impressive results right there. Then the funding was not reallocated for a couple of sessions, and so it ran out in mid-2020, right after I started. So all of a sudden, there was no funding available. But fortunately, the legislature at the, in the 2021 session, reallocated, as Ryan mentioned, $2 million to restart the program. So this past November, we were able to complete a new contract with Craft III to restart that program. And between November 2021 and March 2022, Craft III has had received 40 applications, 27 of which have been approved, totaling $740,000 already for this year. The average loan so far is, this year is $27,400. Now, the second opportunity is a new one. It's a great investment in decentralized wastewater treatment through the ARPA funds and the state and local fiscal recovery fund component of ARPA. $15 million was allocated by the legislature in those federal funds to DEQ for the purposes specifically of septic system repair and replacement. So just like the Craft III that focuses not on new construction, but septic system repairs and replacements for failing systems or connections to existing sewers, it has a similar function. What's really unique about this opportunity is it includes the availability of grants as well as loans. So that means that homeowners can receive not only affordable loans but grants. And because it is a large amount of funding, we're going to be looking at a competitive process that I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, to make sure that those funds are properly distributed to needed communities. So in thinking about the priorities for $15 million in ARPA funds, we looked at a couple of different levels of authorization. So the ARPA funding is really focused on pandemic relief, and especially, as Jennifer mentioned, you know, communities and households that are experiencing economic hardship, and that was often worsened by the pandemic. So when you think about it, when families are out of work and forced to be at home, that actually created more stress on septic systems at the same time that there was not funding to implement repairs. So that's one level of, you know, priority. The second is that the fire recovery from the 2020 wildfires is something that's, of course, of high interest in assisting homeowners and residents to get back on their properties. So we know that about 4,000 residences were damaged by the fires. Over 1,700 of those were on septic. And so DEQ has been in contact with the counties. I'm actually here in Bend. I'm at an environmental health conference, and I've had the opportunity to talk with some of the counties. About 550 of those 1,700 homes have been reauthorized for their septic systems or have had repairs. So there's still a substantial remaining need. So we'll be highly prioritizing that, as was the intent of the legislature. And then the third priority, if you can go to the next slide, please, is for water quality improvements. Because of course, as an environmental agency, we're really interested in looking at how can we use this opportunity to look either at coastal lakes that have been impacted by septic systems, to look at beneficial waters, including in the Mackenzie and the Santee Am, but elsewhere around the state, and to consider the kind of the combination of water quality and economic relief and how that can affect communities. There's also a substantial environmental justice component to this work with septics. You know, many of the properties that are on septic are rural, lower-income counties. So we're looking at, you know, what has happened, you know, in eastern Oregon, what's happening in southern Oregon. So these are some of the considerations we've taken into place when we're thinking about how to prioritize and use this funding. Let's see here. Okay, next slide, please. So how are we going to be implementing this? The ARPA funds, as I mentioned, are a great opportunity to look at how we can help assist communities. And because we will be issuing pass-through grants, so DEQ is not going to be providing grants or loans to individual homeowners, we're going to be putting out competitive calls for proposals for eligible entities, and those include public agencies, tribal governments, councils of government, soil and water conservation districts, as well as community development financial institutions. So this will enable DEQ to provide funding and support to communities. And it's the local counties and regional governments that often have the best idea of what the local need is. And the types of projects that are eligible, like I said, would be repairs or replacements of septic systems that are failing, not for newer construction. And then there's also an opportunity for, if a sewer line has been extended, this funding would not be used for that infrastructure to extend the sewer. There's other funding, including the infrastructure bill and Clean Water State Revolving Fund. But this funding could be partnered with it to connect individual eligible homeowners to an extended sewer. So those are just some of the eligible types of projects and parties. Also, this funding is not limited to small systems. So small systems are what you think of for a residence or maybe a very small restaurant. But larger systems, septic systems, serve affordable housing such as manufactured homes, RV parks, campgrounds, essential restaurants and inns. So there's a wide variety of projects that could be funded through this mechanism. And next slide, please. So I want to just provide an overview of the timeline, where we are and where we're heading. So we were notified of the funding, $15 million in June, July, 2021. And we've been engaged in a pretty extensive and thoughtful scoping process. DEQ and Regional Solutions Team have been talking with affected counties, with housing authorities, with nonprofits, and with, you know, stakeholders of all types. And then we issued, so that kind of helped formulate, so what is the overall need there in a very general sense? And then in January, we issued a request for information. And that was basically a call for concept papers from around the state. You know, what, you know, what would you do if you were a county, whether, you know, it's, you know, in northeast Oregon or on the coastal or in Willamette Valley? What would you do if you had the opportunity to use this funding? And we received over 30 responses, which is actually a pretty high response rate for requests for information. About six of those were for fire recovery-related projects. And the others were everything from sewer connections, septic-to-sewer connections, coastal lakes that have impaired waterways, proposals to move septic systems away from rivers and help assist homeowners in that, in that sense. There's, were environmental justice concerns, very low-income communities. So a wide variety of projects were presented to us. What we're doing is we're going to be issuing a multi-stage request for proposals. So the first phase will be limited to wildfire recovery projects. That will enable us to focus on that priority that's of high interest to DEQ, the state, and the legislature. That will be happening later this spring. We're currently finalizing our inter-agency agreement with DAS to receive the funds. So we're waiting to actually receive those funds. I'm working with Department of Justice to review our call for proposals and for the contract templates for sub-awards. So we anticipate the new call for proposals to go out later this spring. And that will enable us to make decisions and to award funding in late summer, early fall. Then once the dust settles from that round and we have a better sense of how much funding remains, we anticipate a second round of proposals that would include any unmet needs for wildfire recovery as well as some of these other projects around the state that have been shared with us. And then ARPA has two built-in deadlines that we're kind of aware of, and that is all funds need to be obligated by December 2024. So that's the date by which DEQ needs to finalize all of our agreements to sub-awardees. And then there's a December 2026 expenditure deadline to actually have all funds spent and accounted for. So that is, that is what I had to share with you today. Unless you have any questions, I will hand it back to Ryan. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. I'd like to now shift us towards talking about-
Ryan, just a moment, please, before we move forward. I had a question for Deb, and then it looks like Commissioner Addington has a question or comment as well. So Deb, you mentioned that some of these funds may be available to environmental justice communities or tribes. How will that outreach occur so that even tribal governments who are rurally isolated will know about these opportunities and when to make connections about them?
Right. Thank you for that question. So we've been working closely with the Regional Solutions Team in the eastern region with Greg Swieland and Randy Jones have been talking with some of the tribal entities there. And then over on the western side, I know- And then over on the western side, I know that Ryan and Annalisa Batia were focusing with the Ten Mile Lakes region, for example. So we are including them in some of our outreach, but we welcome suggestions for other opportunities.
Okay. Well, I think that there are designated contacts for DEQ and certain regional tribal governments. Just as a heads up, I hadn't heard that there would be any of this support for tribal communities. And I know that as a rurally isolated tribal community who had to massively and suddenly move funds to support not only our own tribal members but our community during COVID, we have tremendous need for infrastructure in terms of wastewater development. So I just think that that's probably true of other tribal nations. And to whatever degree there is an opportunity, I'd like to make sure that we let tribal nations know that that's a possibility. Because as you well know, it's very expensive work. It can be very hard work to find funding for. So I'd be happy to follow up in any way to make sure those connections are made.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Addington.
Thank you. Actually, kind of a similar question, I guess. I'm just wondering about, I'm in southern Oregon. I'm familiar with the fires that went through the talent and Phoenix area. And obviously, this, I mean, there was a lot of mobile home parks destroyed, things like that. And I was just sort of curious too, like are there local, on-the-ground needs for this kind of thing? I mean, I don't know if it's a county that's doing these or the city or, you know, who is submitting these the information to you or the request for information and that kind of thing?
Right. Thank you for asking that. We, we have a list of about sixty so far contacts because we've been working with the regional solutions teams and with our own contacts. So I know that in southern Oregon, we received proposal from Curry County and from soil and water conservation districts. So we're getting contacts a lot of times from the counties and from the nonprofits. We've been talking a lot with the housing authorities in different regions because they're often well-connected to the remaining needs. So that's how the information is getting out. We're looking, we're working a lot with the county recovery teams and nonprofits. Now, nonprofits are not directly eligible to apply, and we've been really clear about that. But we are strongly encouraging them to partner with eligible counties. And that's, that's kind of what we saw in some of the concept papers as well.
Great. And then my last, and maybe this is for Ryan and maybe you're going to cover it. But just sort of the, I'm just wondering if there's such a thing as, you know, as too many resources? And what I mean is, you know, just capacity to deal with this all. And then also have a question about the coordination with other agencies who have funding, the overlap and federal agencies, you know, like FEMA and things like that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in. Thank you for the question, Chair George, Commissioner Addington. Indeed, there's, there's a lot happening. And in terms of getting our arms around the, A, knowing what the opportunities are, but also thinking strategically about what makes the most sense for us to invest our time and energy in is definitely sort of forefront of our decision-making process right now. Because, you know, there certainly is a substantial resource investment in terms of time to just consider pursuing some of these pots of funding. And making sure that it's going to be worthwhile is definitely an important consideration. There's definitely a lot of work, and maybe I'll hand it over to Director Whitman here to talk about some of the coordination that's happening across agencies and sort of infrastructure cabinet that's forming and the Water Corps team between agencies working to discuss what these opportunities are and how best to align ourselves, given our different missions. So.
Director Whitman.
Yeah, thank you. So, great questions. And on the coordination front, there are several bodies that are operating to coordinate between state agencies and local entities that are involved in this work. Particularly on the wildfire side, there has been, over the course of the last year and a half, a wildfire recovery council chaired by the former director of Oregon Department of Transportation, Matt Garrett, where each of there, there is an emergency response organization in the state in state recovery functions. And so that's a cabinet where the agencies in each of those recovery functions meets monthly, including DEQ, talking about our pieces along with Oregon Housing and Community Services, Oregon Department of Transportation and others. And so a lot of the coordination across agencies occurs there. And then in a more geographically focused sense, Deb Maylander mentioned the regional solutions teams and the regional solution staff have really been doing that coordination at the local level. So we have both statewide coordination and then coordination in particular communities that's going on. Similar thing is we move away from the prioritization around wildfire recovery, which probably will take a significant part of this fifteen million and start to look at priorities around public health and the environment. There, you know, it's really more up to DEQ in terms of what we and our partners that we're working with think are the biggest priorities. There's no way that we have enough resources with this program to meet all the need. This is an area that has been way underfunded for decades. And so a lot of what we're doing here is trying to build foundation for what we hope will be longer-term investments that are made by the federal and state governments in this area of rural dispersed wastewater. I think is the way Deb was describing it, which I think is exactly right. It's, that's the piece that hasn't gotten public resources up until recently. And so trying to build the foundation for long-term programs in this area is the work that we're in the middle of right now.
Thank you, Director. Deb?
Yeah, I think it's, it's worth noting that fifteen million is a lot of money. But at twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per repair, that's about five hundred systems. And from what we saw from those thirty proposals, many more. So one other piece I'm really interested in working on is a report out on what did we see? You know, what, what's the overall need? What are some of these vignettes of these different programs? Because I think that will help continue to raise this issue as one that needs more funding and more awareness. You know, like I said at the beginning, there's no closer-to-home concern for public health and water quality than your backyard septic system. So we want to make sure that people are living in healthy environments and that the nearby groundwater and surface waters are being protected. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ready to proceed with the presentation, if that's okay, Chair George?
Yes, thank you, Ryan. Please do.
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to now, and thank you for shifting the slide there, Stephanie. We'd like to talk a little more detail about the bipartisan infrastructure law. This infrastructure package establishes many new programs, but the bulk of the funding is slated to be distributed through existing program channels. In some cases, to be distributed to federal grant and loan programs, some of which are competitive, others are not. And in some cases involving predetermined allocations being distributed to states and tribes for specific purposes. For the existing programs, the infrastructure law establishes enhanced funding amounts. That is, in addition to the typical or continued service level type funding levels. And these funds will be distributed over a five-year time period. The schematic on this slide is a screenshot from an interactive web tool that was developed by Brookings Institute, which, for those that are interested, I highly recommend is a great way to really explore and drill down into the different funding categories to learn about specific programs, who may be eligible, and links on how to apply for funds. Certainly, although transportation, energy and broadband, which are shown in the orange, yellow and light blue boxes here, they represent eighty-seven percent of the funding amounts of that eight hundred and seventy billion dollars. Water was widely regarded as the other top-line item receiving major investments. There is still a lot to unpack about the infrastructure law and what it encompasses. For many of the programs, detailed information and guidance is still under development. And we're waiting for that from the relevant federal agencies in order to, you know, fully grasp and determine what opportunities may be applicable for Oregon. But specifically for water, which is in the darker blue box here on this slide, the water-related initiatives, or I should say, water in darker blue and other water-related initiatives, which is in the teal. This infrastructure package represents about eighty billion dollars in newly authorized funding nationwide. What EPA officials recently described as the single largest investment in water that the federal government has ever made. For a nation that is under-invested in water infrastructure for generations, these investments really represent a major stride in acknowledging that insufficient water infrastructure is really is a threat to our country's security, our economic stability, and the health and prosperity of our people. Of the over fifty billion in water-related funding, over ninety percent of that will be funneled through EPA programs. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The vast majority of this EPA funding will be distributed through the existing state revolving fund programs or SRFs, specifically through the drinking water SRF, which is administered by the Oregon Health Authority in partnership with Business Oregon and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund administered here by DEQ. This infrastructure package appropriates more than twelve billion dollars nationwide to each of these state revolving funds over these five years. The supplemental program funds involve some modifications to state match requirements as well as the target of amount of funding that needs to be distributed as principal forgiveness or grants. A key element of the infrastructure law is to ensure that disadvantaged communities are benefiting equitably from this historic investment in water infrastructure. And as such, there are specific requirements for how much of the grant funding is reserved for these underserved or under-resourced communities. I'll be handing it off in a moment to our Clean Water SRF program to provide some greater detail on the scope of the SRF's work and how our program is preparing to manage and implement the funds. But first, I want to provide a bit more of an overview of some of the other funding enhancements at EPA and some of the other federal agencies. This includes increased funding for specific EPA geographical programs, such as the Columbia River Basin Restoration Grant Program. This is an existing but relatively new program focused on pollution and toxic reductions and water quality improvements. This funding opportunity is open to a wide range of eligible recipients and will be distributing an additional seventy-nine million dollars over the next five years, really a substantial increase compared to what the program has been able to offer during its first few years of operation. Next, I want to highlight the national estuary programs that are intended to protect and restore water quality and ecological integrity of estuaries of national significance. This program includes twenty-eight estuaries nationwide that are eligible for this funding. And that includes the Tillamook Estuary Partnership and Lower Columbia River Estuary Partnerships. One key distinction that I want to point out is that while most of the programs identified in the infrastructure package were both authorized and appropriated at specific funding levels, other programs were only authorized for a spending amount but are awaiting and dependent upon additional congressional action to appropriate the dollars that they were authorized for. Programs on this list whose dollar values are in bold are those that have received fund appropriation, whereas the latter four on this list are still awaiting appropriations in fiscal year twenty twenty-three or beyond. Of particular interest is the Sewer Overflow and Municipal Stormwater Grant Program, which provides funding for critical stormwater infrastructure projects and improvements. This program was launched in fiscal year twenty twenty and currently represents about five hundred thousand dollars per year in available funding to Oregon, which DEQ is applying for so that we can provide sub-award grants to eligible entities for projects that address combined sewer overflows, sanitary sewer overflows and stormwater management needs. An increase of one point four billion dollars for this program has been authorized. And if appropriated, really would be a dramatic increase for the state to provide eligible funding under this program, perhaps to the tune of about four million dollars per year. The other authorized but not yet appropriated programs identified here are new. And if funded, could also be a valuable source of funding to address specific challenges in Oregon related to things like community capacity and technical assistance, improving our wastewater infrastructure to be resilient to natural disasters, and ensuring that we are fostering workforce development for the next generation of wastewater professionals. Next slide, please. So in addition to the fifty-plus billion in quote-unquote "water" funding that's authorized or appropriated through EPA, there's other billions of dollars directed to other water-related programs and activities. The table on this slide represents a representative but not comprehensive list of funding programs administered by other federal agencies. These programs support efforts that could have important value to water quality and watershed management efforts in Oregon. This includes nearly two billion dollars going to the Corps of Engineers to support aquatic ecosystem restoration projects, over two billion dollars going to the U.S. Forest Service for ecosystem restoration activities, over six hundred million to the NRCS for watershed rehabilitation and flood prevention programs. These programs help federal, state, local, tribal governments protect and restore watersheds. Over eight billion dollars being directed to Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation for drought resilience and water scarcity issues in the state. Combined, this involves twelve different program areas, addressing aging infrastructure, water storage, groundwater storage, conveyance, water recycling and reuse projects, and water smart grants that support innovative ideas to improve infrastructure efficiency. There's also a specific line item for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to the tune of a hundred and sixty-two million dollars specifically for Klamath Basin restoration activities. And there's also funding for various NOAA programs that promise to benefit salmon populations in the Pacific Northwest. While we are focused on the EPA funding streams, our sister natural resource agencies are also actively tracking a lot of these other categories. And like I mentioned before, we're working together to coordinate and identify potential alignment on all these different opportunities. In particular, I know that ODFW has identified six thematic priority areas that they will be seeking to fund from the infrastructure package, either through U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service or NOAA funding streams or others. In particular, these themes include things like de-listing Oregon coastal coho, bringing sockeye salmon back to the Wallauga Lake area, supporting Klamath's restoration efforts, and helping secure more resilient water management in the rogue watershed, and improving forest health and habitat conditions on federal forest lands. Similarly, ODA and ODF will be closely tracking the Forest Service and NRCS funding streams and other agencies such as DLCD, Water Resources Division, and DSL may also be seeking funding from some of these infrastructure package initiatives. Now that we've provided this overview and the range of infrastructure package funding investments, I'd like to hand it over to our SRF program manager to introduce herself and provide some greater detail on how we're planning to approach this opportunity and responsibility. Lynn?
Thank you, Ryan. Good morning, Chair George and Commissioners. Can you hear me? Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Here we go. For the record, my name is Lynn Barlow, and I manage DEQ's Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. Some background, as you probably already know, over the past thirty years, DEQ's Clean Water State Revolving Fund has loaned more than one billion dollars to communities, small and large, across Oregon. Funded water quality improvement projects- Funded water quality improvement projects range from wastewater treatment plant construction to streamside habitat restoration. The hallmark elements of the loan program are below-market interest rates and principal forgiveness or additional subsidization awards for eligible economically distressed communities and green infrastructure projects. Next slide, please. So, the new bipartisan infrastructure law, which I'll be referring to as Bill, will come directly to the SRF programs in the form of capitalization grants. Here in Oregon, in most states, this new supplemental capitalization grant is in addition to our annual base capitalization grant that the program receives from EPA. And on this slide, you can see that this first year, first of five years, the bill supplemental allotment is over twenty million dollars. And it's intended to increase, has not been allocated, but intended to increase to over twenty-seven million dollars in 2026. This year, we don't know our final base capitalization grant allocation. It's estimated to be about thirteen million dollars this year. As Brian already mentioned, the bill is remarkable as the single largest investment in clean water that the federal government has ever made. And by law, the bill supplemental cap grant funds must be distributed as forty-nine percent toward loan principal forgiveness. Therefore, in Oregon, the Clean Water SRF will be able to increase the amount of principal forgiveness we can offer per loan to communities. This will require rulemaking to remove current restrictions on principal forgiveness amounts per loan. And we are still awaiting final base cap grant allocations from EPA to determine to what actual amount the program can increase principal forgiveness while still maintaining perpetuity of the fund. In the bill, EPA encourages states to review and strengthen our affordability criteria for distributing principal forgiveness to disadvantaged communities. You've heard us speak a lot about targeting disadvantaged communities with these monies and it's a very it's a very serious intention and goal, getting these monies to the most disadvantaged communities. In the Clean Water Act, affordability criteria, and this is for the Clean Water SRF programs, is based on a population's income, unemployment data, and population trends currently. The Clean Water SRF program has supported disadvantaged communities under this affordability criteria by prioritizing principal forgiveness for economically distressed communities. In the same rulemaking in which we will be removing this loan principal forgiveness limits, the advisory committee we'll be bringing together will also review our current affordability criteria for opportunities to strengthen the existing criteria and to suggest additional environmental justice metrics to add. In the same process, the advisory committee will review water quality project scoring and ranking criteria in rule and suggest opportunities there to add environmental justice metrics. And to give an example, certainly economic metrics are part of environmental justice metrics, but we would be looking to add other metrics such as public health reporting or educational data. As mentioned, we've initiated a rulemaking process, so we'll be coming back before the Environmental Quality Commission within the next six months. The bill provides a second capitalization grant. It's not on this slide. But the smaller second capitalization grant is intended to address emerging contaminants such as PFAS and harmful algal blooms. By law, these funds must be distributed to communities entirely as forgivable loans. And here in Oregon, the first year allocation for these types of projects, the capitalization grant is just over one million dollars. With the bill, there has been an amendment to the Clean Water Act Title VI for all capitalization grants going forward. So this is supplemental and base cap grants going forward. Must provide or can provide a two percent allowance for technical assistance. So states can use this two percent allowance for technical assistance to communities that need the support toward loan application as well as project management of SRF-funded projects. And eligible activities for technical assistance to communities can include and are not limited to outreach, planning efforts, loan application preparation, preliminary engineering reports, financial documentation necessary to receive SRF loans, building capacity, and other types of assistance. This is significant. And I'll repeat that this is going forward, even our base capitalization grant. As an amendment to the Clean Water Act, we're able to receive these two percent funds. At this time, here in Oregon, we intend to contract out for most of these technical assistance services. We have two staff that provide some level of technical assistance to communities. But to be able to provide a comprehensive and to provide capacity for projects across the state, we do intend to contract out for many of these technical assistance services. I wanted to give you an idea of our outreach plans so far. They're still shaping.
Moment, Lynn. Commissioner Kyle.
Oh, yeah, I just have a question about that technical assistance and the contracting out because there is a lot of conversations around this. What's going to be the process for trying to find those consultants? Because there is also overlap with kind of the OSU Extension Service. There's other agencies that are also involved in this area. So I'm just curious who's going to make that decision and how it's going to be made.
Thank you. It's a good question and it's something we're still determining ourselves. We had a conversation as recently as yesterday with EPA on how even this two percent funding would get to the SRF program or how we would receive it. Our current thought is that we might be going through RFP process. But we still need to determine more information from EPA. And we're certainly open to ideas, Commissioner Kyle, if you have them. So still being determined. And thank you for that information about OSU and other resources. Are there other questions, Jennifer?
Jennifer. Yes, thank you, Chair George. I was just going to also add, Commissioner Kyle, you know, our interest is in thinking about, you know, how do we find entities who have those relationships with smaller communities? And even preparing to receive financial assistance and undertake, say, a capital project is pretty intensive. And we want to be able to ensure that we are working with entities that have both the expertise and the credibility and are sensitive to, not only do you have to build a project, but you have to be able to operate and maintain it for decades to come. And so thinking through, so there are a number of entities and there's probably more that we could be thinking about. So OSU Extension may be an entity. There's other nonprofits such as, and Lynn, you're going to have to help me, like RCAC.
And, yeah, go ahead. You and some we've already had some initial conversations with, and we're actually hoping there are a number that we don't know about yet that we would like to learn about additional possible resources throughout the state.
And I think we're also looking, if there are opportunities to be able to partner, again, back to Commissioner Addington's remarks about there's a lot of money and a lot of interest, I think, around similar parameters towards, you know, addressing infrastructure. And so if there are opportunities either to leverage or partner, we definitely want to be seeking those out too. And, you know, just for instance, Lynn and her folks are very closely tied and connected with Business Oregon and the work that they're doing. And, you know, there may be reasons why we can't do precisely the same thing, but we want to ensure that we are strategically aligned with how we're approaching these funding streams as much as possible so that we aren't overlapping, duplicating, or providing confusing messages about the services and the financial assistance that's available to communities for various parts of their infrastructure needs.
Dr. Whitman.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. And thanks, Jennifer and Lynn. I just want to emphasize the focus of this work on environmental justice communities. So, non-English speaking communities in the state, tribal nations. We very much want to make sure, the whole purpose of this is to provide resources to communities that historically have been underserved, have not had the ability to even think about developing a project. So there are kind of traditional partners here, but I think we're very open to bringing new partners into this conversation also. That's it.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was about to share some of our plans around outreach. It will certainly include our Clean Water, our DEQ, Clean Water website, media, DEQ staff, Clean Water SRF staff, and Regional Solutions Team will have a large role in outreach to communities. We're, as already mentioned, we're communicating regularly with our Oregon Drinking Water SRF colleagues at Business Oregon and Oregon Health Authority to provide clear messaging to partners and communities. And we have begun conversations around the possibility of sharing contracts, administering contracts together as well. We will be working with other nonprofit and government partners and stakeholders to extend and amplify messaging around the bill and how communities can apply for loans. And we will be directly targeting communities using existing data such as the Clean Water Needs Survey Data, which is in progress now. We will be developing new environmental justice metrics to add. With the advisory committee, we're forming up for the rulemaking. We also have water quality permit compliance data and already small and economically distressed communities data. More to come on the outreach, but this is what we're thinking at this time and how it is shaping up. To summarize the timeline, President Biden again signed the bill, the bipartisan infrastructure law, back on November fifteenth of 2021. Just this past March, EPA released the implementation memo, which provides the more specific information and guidelines on how EPA and states will administer the capitalization grants. The bill goes into effect this May, so next month, one hundred eighty days after signing it to law. And then, as I've mentioned, we have begun a rulemaking process to remove limits on the principal forgiveness in rule and add additional environmental justice metrics into our affordability criteria and loan application scoring and ranking processes. As part of this process, we'll also be determining what elements need to go into rule and what can be inserted elsewhere in programmatic policy, working closely with advisory committee. And our current thought is that we would come back to the EQC for revised rule adoption in late 2022, the November session or early 2023. And then, yeah.
So one of the ideas I just wanted to reach out about is as you're making those plans for the outreach opportunities and relying on existing networks or websites or even Clean Water Needs Survey Data. In particular, those sorts of things, and again, I'm not familiar with the Clean Water Needs Survey Data, but in a lot of cases, local counties or other water providers would not have included tribal nations in that kind of evaluation. They just would have been excluded because there's always this kind of presumption, oh, well, there's something else, maybe federal money of some sort. Regardless of the fact that it doesn't exist, they won't be in the traditional networks, probably in most parts of the state. So, again, I would just encourage DEQ to work on your existing government-to-government relationships, any liaison roles that you have. Because, you know, a lot of the standard, just information on a website or reaching out to soil and water conservation districts even, or other water providers, they just aren't going to include tribes in their network. So just a note, and we'd really love to hear about how that happens. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair George. I appreciate that. And I've already been in touch with Ryan Bannonhoof, our liaison, how best to communicate directly to tribes. Thank you. Just one final note, EPA, I just wanted the EQC to know that EPA is actually allowing application for this first allocation of bill funds until September 2023. Oregon, here in Oregon, we intend to apply for the bill supplemental cap grant funds in late 2022 or early 2023. And with that, I will turn it back over to, I believe, Ryan.
Actually, Jennifer, are you on point for the rest of the slides? Closing this out here.
Sorry. Yes, yes, I am. All right. Yeah, thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Ryan. Let's see. So next slide, please, Stephanie. Yes. Whoops. We, I think we went one too far. There we go. So a number of things, and we just wanted to close out with some of the things that we are thinking about. And some of these things have just come up organically as we've been talking about our plans and how we're thinking about both building out these programs, communicating, developing structure guidance, and the overall approaches to these programs. But I do, just in terms of thematically, I wanted to summarize these here just so that folks have a sense of how we're thinking about this. So clearly, you know, again, unprecedented level of funding. Also, you know, that's a significant challenge, but also significant opportunity. So start with the opportunities first. You know, there is this wonderful and amazing opportunity we have, again, with this level of funding, to really think about how do we make some giant leap forwards and provide that opportunity for some of our underserved communities to make some giant leap forwards in their infrastructure. And literally, as Deb put it, in their backyards to improve quality of life, public health, and environment around them. You know, as part of that, there are these opportunities to infuse in these projects natural and green infrastructure solutions. Oregon has always been a leader in that. That continues to be something that we think there's going to be some great opportunity to see through these funding opportunities. We are looking at these new community-level partnerships. So again, and looking at folks that maybe aren't on our traditional list, you know, who have we tapped into before? Yeah, that's well and good, and we'll be talking to those same people, but we will also be explicitly looking to expand those opportunities to bring in new entities, new areas of expertise, new perspectives into these processes so that we are targeting money where it's needed most. And so we will be, and we've begun, we've got more to do. And I think a theme here is that we continue to be very open-minded to suggestions about how best to do that. And so this is one stop here and one opportunity for us to get information. And we're actively reaching out and thinking about how we do that across the programs. Again, you know, thinking about how do we, how do we leverage, how do we partner? Are there ways in which we can bring various funding sources together to get additive benefits that we might not have otherwise seen? Or we were dispersing bits and pieces of money in here and there. There are some opportunities potentially to get some broader-scale environmental and public health benefits from all of the funding that is coming into the state. And next slide. Just talk a little bit about challenges. So a few things here. One, Clean Water SRF, as Lynn mentioned, we have a total of the new monies that are coming in are required to be given as forty-nine percent principal forgiveness. So communities, in some communities, it may be a hundred percent principal forgiveness. In some communities, it may be a percentage of their total loan that will be principal forgiveness. For anybody that is, you know, and so it's probably more the latter than the former. And so there is still a loan component. This still is a federal funding program. And there are a lot of federal requirements associated. associated with receiving these monies. For anything that involves infrastructure, there's a lot of planning that's involved to be able to have a project that planned and again operated. And that's something a community can maintain over time. So just this whole loan readiness, there's a lot there. And we also know while some communities have been frequent customers of our Clean Water SRF program, many have not. This is still, you know, it's still a loan program. And so there are probably, we know there are entities that have been hesitant to enter into this process because it is still, it is still a loan, and there are a lot of requirements associated with the programs. As Lynn noted, that we will need to do some, some rulemaking to accommodate some of these new, new requirements. And another piece I noticed in the, in the news across the board, and it applies here too. You know, just in terms of contractor availability, supply chain issues and, and cost of materials, we can anticipate are going to, are going to play a role here as well. There are requirements in these federal fundings called Buy American, Build American, that directs a lot of the supply for these projects to come from American-made sources as well. So there are some challenges that we foresee. Some of these aren't new, some of them are carrying over, but we're also thinking about how do we get ahead of these as much as we can? And so Lynn talked a little bit about, you know, technical assistance may help some of these communities be ready to both plan, plan a project and receive a loan. You know, how do we think ahead about the rulemaking? We think that's very doable, but it is going to require a little bit, some different approaches that we've used in the past. And so with that, I think we've got one more slide. There may even be some additional funding on the horizon, as Ryan mentioned. Congressionally-directed spending, otherwise known more colloquially as earmarks, are back in there. There are some remaining unobligated ARPA funds that are sitting out there as well. And there continues to be some, you know, there's still, I think, some congressional efforts. Some may have an opinion about how likely it is, but there, there are still on the president's agenda, some additional investment legislation that continues to be in play back in DC. So these are things that we'll just continue to keep our eye on. But in the meantime, we'll be, we are getting to work on preparing for these, for these other funds and how to fast distribute them. And with that, we'll take any other questions that folks may have before we wrap up.
Thank you, everyone, for this exciting presentation. It is a historical time for much-needed investment. And as folks have said, it will therefore also be a challenge, right? To, to take these very big steps is going to be a stretch, but it's one that we know that you'll be up for, and we'll do everything we can to support you in that. We know that there are communities, as you've said out there, who desperately need this investment. So we, we really are going to be cheering you on as we do everything we can to reach those folks. We are running a little bit over time, so unless somebody has an urgent comment or question, I think we'll take a quick break so that then we can move on to our legislative session outcomes. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. I just wanted to let you and others know that I'm going to have to drop off for the rest of the meeting to get to another, another event. So thank you very much, and I will circle back with Stephanie and watch the recording of the last two presentations.
Great. Thanks very much, Commissioner. We wish you well with your, your next meeting. And Vice Chip Rosso. Oh, were you just waving to Greg? Okay. Well, that's good.
I was just waving by.
Let's all wave to Greg. All right. So let's take a five-minute break and be back here at 10:40 for our next update. Thanks very much.
And thank you, Chair George. This is Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. The recording will be paused during the break, and we will restart when you reconvene at approximately 10:40.
Yeah, I'm sure we did need six or seven minutes of silence on the recording, so thank you for that. So next, we have our 2022 Legislative Session Outcomes. And so we will turn it over to you, Nancy.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso, and members of the Commission, I'm Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager. And I'm really happy to be here today to provide a report on our legislative outcomes from the short session. It's nice to come and report back to you after we were sort of here talking about our, our hopes and dreams, and now I'm here to share what happened. I have on hand for questions Ryan Hoof, our Senior Water Quality Legislative Advisor, and Garrett Kranzke, who's currently filling our air quality legislative role. And I want to start actually with a thank you to my team, Ryan Garrick and Abby Beduris, who's not here today, but for their work this legislative session. I think as you're about to hear, we had a very good, very productive session. So Stephanie, why don't you go to the first slide? Or second slide? There we go. So I'm just going to hit a few kind of high-level points. So this was a short 32-day session. As we've been doing recently, committee hearings were held remotely, but voting took place in person. We had a new speaker, Dan Rayfield, and I think he presided over a fairly orderly session. There certainly were some controversies like the farm worker overtime bill, but generally, I think the legislature got a lot done. They passed more than 100 bills. And that's a sharp contrast with the last short session, which ended in a walkout. So I think everyone was fairly pleased with the results. And as we talked about in our last update, the state economic picture has continued to be very rosy. And in fact, the legislature approved an additional $1.4 billion in general fund spending. And then if you add in the federal spending, I think it's about $2.6 billion. And I, I just want to put an exclamation point on this because this is not a long session. This is a short session. This is unprecedented revenues. So it's quite something. I think the other news to sort of mention is just sort of the continued exodus of legislators. We've already seen some changes that have come to pass recently. And, you know, before the start of the next session, we expect about a third of the House to turn over. Some of those members are going to be running for the Senate, and the Senate will lose about a quarter of their members, and including Senator Peter Courtney, who I'm sure you all know is retiring after 38 years in the legislature. So a lot of changes coming to the legislature. Folks have sort of likened this to the time when we had term limits, when there was just so many new faces. So it'll be a really interesting session next time. So let's go to the next slide. So I want to talk about some of the major budget provisions and some of the legislation that passed. So House Bill 5202 was the omnibus budget bill. And again, this bill adds or makes changes to the current 2123 budget. And so I just said, you know, there's sort of unprecedented revenues. So some of the funding that was directed to DEQ includes $15 million for our Clean Vehicle Rebate Program. Oregon continues to be a top in EV sales, so this infusion will ensure we can meet the demand for at least the coming year. And I think you're going to hear a lot more about this from the director and from the program sort of in the coming days and weeks. So I won't talk more about that, but anyway, we're very pleased to get that funding infusion. Second, $15 million for a new medium and heavy-duty charging infrastructure grant program. This is a new program that DEQ will administer, and this is really an outgrowth of the advanced clean truck rule that you adopted last November. We sought funding to make good on our promise to help develop infrastructure and hopefully in the future, vehicle incentives to help make medium and heavy-duty truck owners transition to, help their transition to zero emission vehicles. So that was an exciting development. Our request for funding for our lab manager and to replace aging lab equipment was approved, and as was our funding request to address our state data center expenses. So generally speaking, a very good budget outcomes for DEQ. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about some of the key bills. So House Bill 4077, Environmental Justice, passed. And, you know, this is a huge win for the governor and frankly, for all of us. This renames the Environmental Justice Task Force as the Environmental Justice Council and also makes some membership changes to that council. It directs the creation of a new environmental justice mapping tool with DEQ and Oregon Health Authority as leaders in that. And we'll be working closely with DASS, Portland State University, and the Institute of Natural Resources at Oregon State in the development of this tool. I think really importantly, it allocated new resources to DEQ and other agencies for this work. So it's not just sort of like a feel-good bill where, you know, we set some goals, but there are really sort of, you know, concrete measurable things that we'll be doing. So two of the positions that we got at DEQ, one is to support the council. The council will be housed in the governor's office, but DEQ will be providing that staff support. And that's the first time that I'm aware of where this has had that sort of institutional support and somebody who can be sort of dedicated to supporting the work. So that's, I think, going to be really significant. We're also, we'll be hiring a research analyst for the mapping tool development. And so I know the directors talked a lot about this and, and right on cue. That was well timed. Yes. Go ahead, Director.
Well, and, and while we're pausing, I also just want to throw in a bit of a, I guess, maybe a quest for sidebar follow-up. I think it is very exciting to see real resources putting towards a tool that could really help advance our conversations around environmental justice. That being said, my kind of sidebar interest is to talk with DEQ or anybody who is more intimately familiar with these types of tools to the degree to which they exist now. We recently got a request for a consultation on a federal beta version of the Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool, which, you know, sounds kind of exciting, but as you know, it can be very challenging to respond to these requests for consultation when, you know, we, we have next to no knowledge of it or what its strengths or weaknesses might be. So if there is anybody who, who does have greater knowledge of this, we would probably love to have a sidebar conversation so that we can better respond to these requests for consultation. And then Director Whitman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. And let me address that point first. So the Federal Environmental Protection Agency is going through development of a next generation analytical tool around environmental justice. And at the same time that states are doing the same thing. And the state tools tend to be more adapted to the specific public health, racial, ethnic conditions in, in particular states. And so EPA recently released a draft of their tool just a couple of weeks ago. We are tracking that carefully. The Oregon Health Authority also is tracking it. So I think, Chair George, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you about how state entities that are tracking this can work together with our tribal nations and have kind of a group conversation about this and share at least our state perspective about what we, what we think we're seeing and how it relates to the current EPA tool and what they're adding, what they're not adding. And some of that, we'd be very happy to do that.
I think that would be tremendously helpful. Thank you, Director. I'm happy to follow up with you about that.
Okay.
And to reach out and include any other tribes who have, you know, the ability to participate in that conversation.
Yep. Yep. That would be most welcome. And frankly, we would appreciate the tribal expertise on, on some of this, I think, would add a lot to the Oregon-specific conversation. That is part of the culture of this place and, you know, needs to be, we need to be thinking about that, both with regard to this work at the federal level across the nation, but then our more focused work here in Oregon. So with that, there's a lot going on in the environmental justice space right now. And it's, in my mind, this is such a wonderful aspect of, of the environmental work that's going on right now nationally and then here in the Pacific Northwest also. And our, our neighbor to the north, Washington, is, is in the midst of a lot of work in this area as well. So as Nancy mentioned, we are getting some resourcing badly needed to work in this area, along with Health Authority also getting some resourcing. We also have had essentially informal ad hoc groups working here in the agency. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that in the Director's Report. But I think we're getting to the point where we, we need to create a bit more structure for this work at DEQ. And so I'm talking with both the staff in the agency who have been doing this on an informal basis, but also talking with the DEQ leadership about what that looks like here in the agency. And so there'll be a little bit more to come on this at the May meeting, but we are, in addition to the resources that we're getting from, that we received in the short session, we are also focusing some existing resources on this work. And we may well be making some, ask for some additional resources in the 23 Oregon Legislature. And this is all by way of integrating environmental justice work into our, our everyday programs is a key part of those programs. You just heard in the, in the great presentation around infrastructure funding about the opportunity that clearly exists there to do that work. Well, the same thing exists all across the board in the agency in terms of how to integrate environmental justice work, both intentionality about how we're affecting communities and engagement, community engagement into our work. So that's all, this conversation is very live in the agency right now. And again, I think it's my feeling that we're at a point where we need to formalize that structure and be talking to you more about that at the May Commission Meeting. But it's, it will be done in a way that fit, very much fits within dovetails with what the legislature just did with House Bill 4077. And I think, I think for the moment, that's all I wanted to say on this, but just give you a little bit of visibility on the broader work that's going on, on this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really helpful. Another bill that passed, Senate Bill 1576, mattress recycling. You've heard us talk about this a little bit in the past. This bill has taken a few sessions to get through. This is championed by Senator Manning from Lane County. And it establishes a program to collect and manage discarded mattresses. It'll be run by a stewardship organization with oversight from DEQ. The bill has been financed with a fee on mattress sales. So we're pleased to see this move forward. Next slide, Stephanie. And of course, something we've all talked about a lot, Senate Bill 1501, the Private Forest Accord Bill, which passed with strong bipartisan support. I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it because you've been hearing about it, although if you have more questions, I've also got Ryan here to handle those. But, you know, one thing of significance, DEQ received two new positions, two new permanent positions that will focus on providing technical assistance related to water quality and aquatic ecosystems, ecosystems on forested land. So I believe we're sort of, we've, we got a number of positions, as you'll be hearing about from the session, and so we're working quickly to figure out when we can hire these staff and really get them to work and start implementing these bills. Another major piece of legislation, Senate Bill 1567, Critical Energy Hub. So this is championed by Michael Dembrough, Senator Dembrough, and it requires owners of bulk oil terminals located in Moaloma, Columbia and Lane Counties to conduct seismic vulnerability assessments. And the owners must then implement seismic risk mitigation plans that are approved by DEQ. I know you've been hearing about this earlier today, and, you know, there has been widespread concern about these terminals and their proximity to the Willamette River. Moaloma County recently released a report detailing the impact of a major earthquake on these oil tanks and terminals and the potential to trigger a catastrophic oil spill. So, you know, it was really great to see a bill of this magnitude get momentum in a short session like this. DEQ will have, you know, this does represent new work for DEQ. We received four positions to conduct our oversight and implementation, plus some additional contracting dollars. We're going to have to definitely work with some. We're going to have to definitely work with some, you know, experts as we, as we develop this program. And I think we'll go ahead and move on to the next bill. The next slide, thank you. And so I just want to touch on sort of three key bills that were important to DEQ. So Senate Bill 1558 was an omnibus transportation bill. I think what's important to DEQ is that the bill adjusts the allocation of the privilege tax, which is how we fund our EV rebate. So under this new law, DEQ will receive at least $12 million, which is our current allocation, or 45%, whichever is greater. So had this law been in place in 2021, we would have received about 15% more revenue. So it's not a huge amount more revenue, but as car sales increase, we will see more for the program. And I think, you know, every, every bit helps. So that was great to see. And Senator Byer was really the champion of that. So we thank him for that. House Bill 4139, this is a buy-clean bill. This was actually the Speaker's bill. And it directs ODOT to establish a program that's designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by using lower carbon materials in construction and maintenance. And essentially requires them to conduct lifecycle assessments on certain construction and maintenance activities. DEQ will be consulting with them. Of course, our materials program has some experience with this. So we'll be working with ODOT. And then also importantly for us, the, this bill included the establishment of this new medium and heavy-duty infrastructure fund. And why that's important is that it really, it makes the fund permanent. And so it allows the legislature to add more to it in the future if they want to. So that was a really important piece as we sort of get this medium and heavy-duty infrastructure program off the ground, which is going to, you know, take a number of years to implement. And then finally, I want to mention House Bill 4068. This makes changes to the Oregon Department of Emergency Management. We at DEQ got one position for our emergency response exercises and our continuity of operations and planning and preparedness. This, that position will actually be in our central services division. So this doesn't necessarily address our need for emergency response and our spill response. So we're still going to be coming back to the legislature, you know, for funding for that in the next session. We had some really productive conversations with the Chair of the Veterans and Emergency Response House Committee, Representative Paul Evans. He really supports what we're trying to do. We're sort of exploring different ideas about how to create just sort of more institutional support for our spill response. So that is to come. You'll hear more about that as we're developing our agency request budget. But these are sort of the, the big things that happened in the session. And I think that kind of, that wraps up what I wanted to share with you today. It was a whirlwind session, but I think we, we got plenty of new work. And so I, you know, we were very pleased and we'll have our hands full going forward. I don't know if the Director has anything else he wants to share.
Well, just very briefly, Nancy, thank you to you and your team for the work you did during session. We had, we had a lot of support from legislators, which was, was pleasing to see, showing a lot of confidence in the agency's ability to take on some new responsibilities. And so I think that augurs well for DEQ going forward. And you'll hear more in May about our ambitious list of additional budget asks for the 23 session and some additional ask in terms of legislative work as well. So I'm just foreshadowing that a little bit. Coming to you at your next meeting.
Vice Chair Brassa.
Just the one question and then maybe a comment if I can formulate it. First, just the question is, the Critical Energy Hub, just so I understand what that is, because I do know I did track the report and I did see the action I was taking. Is this focused on conducting the seismic vulner, you know, studying the seismic risk of our Critical Energy Hub? Is it, is there, is there actions that's required by, what's the, what's the expectation of, of that bill? So maybe I'll start there.
I'll respond.
Oh, good.
I can respond at a high level. Yes, it requires both an assessment of the risk associated with, you know, each particular piece of the, of the hub, if you will, and then also development of a plan for mitigating risk and that has to be approved by DEQ. And then implementation of that plan over time, which again is subject to DEQ oversight. So this is right from the planning through implementation, new program to deal with this risk to surrounding communities and to the river from, from a major Cascadia earthquake. So a lot of, a lot of that technical work likely will be contracted. But it also has some permanent staff for DEQ to run this program on a long-term basis.
I would just also add that there's a requirement that DEQ submit a report to the legislature by November of 2024. So I think that we will continue to again, sort of share with the legislature, you know, the, the outcome of these assessments and kind of their risk mitigation activities. I imagine there is going to be funding needs and other sort of bigger picture conversations. There's also a provision in the bill that I honestly don't know that much about, but it requires the Department of Energy to develop an energy security plan. And I think again, there's sort of a question around, you know, is this the place to hold our fuel supply? And what, what's really the long-term conversation to have about that? So there's sort of the immediate risks of an earthquake and spilling into the river, but also I think bigger questions for the state on, on energy security.
Director Whitman.
Yeah, real quickly on this point, is you're going to hear about a little bit later in the director's report, there are also questions just about the long-term role of liquid fuels in Oregon, to be direct here. You know, we're, we're seeing significant growth in renewable fuels and biofuels, which is great. But we're also talking about 100% of new passenger vehicles sales being electric by 2035. And so by 2050, you know, this is not going to happen overnight, but by 2050, what, what is the need for storage of liquid fuels in Oregon? That, I think that longer-term look at energy and how we power our transportation system and what's the, what's the infrastructure for that is part of what the Oregon Department of Energy will be looking at in their responsibilities under this legislation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Yes, Nancy, it's kind of hard to believe that all this came out of a short session. But yeah, lots of good work in the works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to just, as mentioned, also remind everybody that we are working on our agency request budget and our policy option packages. So we will be coming back. And so anyone else out there who's listening and will be continuing to engage with, with stakeholders and community members. But I just want to let everybody know we're still in the middle of this process. And so if you have ideas and thoughts, please do let us know. And we'll be, I'm sure, coming back to you to, to share updates soon. So thank you.
Vice Chair Brassa.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Nancy. As you come back and as we go through sort of the budget process and start to get a, start to get a sense of what's gearing up for the long session next year, it would be helpful to, and I'm not sure how to do this, but given just the magnitude of new positions and new programs that we've brought on to the, into the department, it'd really be helpful to help us just understand where that new work is showing up, what areas are growing and, and then, and be able to, you know, contextualize that. We know there's still plenty of areas within the agency that still have a lot of need. And so I'm just trying to kind of have some way to grasp all of the, the additional positions and yet also be able to still hold, hold, hold on to the fact that there's still a lot of areas within the, within the agency that, that do, that are still, you know, substantively needing additional capacity.
Director Whitman.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Brassa. We will do that. And I, I will just give you a very short preview. With all this growth and with the turmoil in labor markets right now generally across, across the country and to some degree of the globe, recruiting is being a challenge right now. And so we're, we have both the, the challenge coming out of the pandemic on top of a fairly significant expansion of staffing at DEQ and for this, and for state government generally. What I, the number I've heard from the Director of the Department of Administrative Services, there are 4,000 new state positions that have been created in the last year. And so that's a lot of hiring. That's a lot of new people. And going through the recruiting, onboarding is, is no small task. The other thing, you heard a lot about infrastructure dollars coming into the state. The grant administration infrastructure at DEQ is way underdeveloped. And this is something we'll be talking with the commission about in May. But we're, we're trying to think about how to create a grant infrastructure within the agency so that we are not leaving resources on the table, mainly federal resources, that we could be bringing to Oregon communities. That frankly has not gotten enough attention at DEQ and I suspect some other state agencies. And so we're thinking carefully about that also.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Well, I think we can, if you're ready, Director, we could move right on into the director's report.
Thank you, Chair George. And that last comment was kind of a good transition because I was going to mention on the recruiting side that there's, there's a lot of recruiting going on right now, a lot of new positions. There's also a somewhat higher level of turnover in the agency than we've seen. And I think it's pretty normal for any large organization right now coming out of the pandemic. There, people are thinking, kind of rethinking, what do they want to do with their lives? And so inevitably, that's, that's leading to some additional work. I am going to start, so I have about, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. I'm not necessarily going to take up all that extra time. But in terms of, just to give you a roadmap of what I am going to try to cover, I am going to address several issues that came up yesterday in public forum. So I'm going to talk about the poultry farms a little bit. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the deschutes issues that you heard the presentation on. I'm going to talk about, you heard about the media around Oregon and where we're at with water quality. I'm going to talk about that for a little bit. And we also had Cesara brought up, and I'm going to speak to that as well. So I'll cover those things first and then I'm going to, I am going to roll into a number of things that are covered at a high level in the written director's report, but I'm going to go into a bit more detail. One of those is internal audit, which Commissioner Kyle brought up, some of the, the work going on there. I want to talk to the commission a little bit about that in more detail. I do want to talk about the Clean Vehicle Rebate Program kind of more expansively because there's a lot of exciting stuff going on there. And I want to make sure you hear about it relatedly. I'm giving you a heads up that DEQ is going to bring, we expect to bring to you late, later this year, probably toward the end of the year, proposed rules around what's called Advanced Clean Cars 2, which is the next generation of standards for zero emission vehicles. So I'll talk about that and several other things, but that's, so there's a little bit of a roadmap. I don't want to bleed into starting to talk about things quite yet. So first of all, the poultry farms. You heard yesterday, there are three specific facilities being significant, facilities being proposed in the CIO general area, Lebanon area in, in the Willamette Valley. DEQ has not been very involved in these facilities. The lead responsibility for permitting those facilities is the Oregon Department of Agriculture, and they have been working on some of those applications. Some of what you heard people express concerns about though were concerns about air quality impacts as well as water quality impacts. The ODA Authority is shared with DEQ under that MOA that we have between DEQ and, and Oregon Department of Agriculture to administer what's called the Confined Animal Feeding Operation or CAFO program under the Federal Clean Water Act. So that piece deals with the water quality, potential water quality impacts of those facilities. The air quality impacts, frankly, are not really regulated in Oregon right now. There is authority under the Federal Clean Air Act to potentially regulate some of these facilities. The Oregon Legislature took up this issue now 14 years ago in 2008 with something called the Dairy Air Task Force. And it was focused on dairies. And that task force developed a recommendation to the legislature for a program around the air quality impacts of dairies. And the Oregon Legislature did confirm that DEQ has the authority to carry out the recommendations of that task force. But a couple of things. Number one, the recommendations of that task force only had to do with dairies, not with poultry farms. And so poultry farms are considered a confined animal feeding operation under the Federal Clean Water Act. But this dairy or task force really only addressed dairies. So that was the first piece. The second piece is legislature, the task force recommended funding and a, you know, a new program to be developed at DEQ with participation also from Department of Agriculture around air quality issues. Legislature did not fund that effort. So the legislature's never provided funding to any Oregon agency to really address these issues. So where that leaves us is we have some not fully defined authority probably under the Clean Air Act to address some of these issues, but we don't really have a permitting program. We, we don't have a permitting program for this and we don't have staff who have been resourced to address this. So this is something that is going to need conversation with the Oregon Legislature about whether they believe this is something that should be resourced in Oregon. We don't currently have, have the, the program or staff to address it.
Commissioner Kyle.
So I have a question about that. I appreciate that background. But there is a lot of growing epidemiological evidence showing that the ammonia emissions from high-intensity animal agriculture, whether it's dairy or poultry or swan, it's contributing to localized air quality issues that are having respiratory effects in communities. So there does seem to be a point at which facility, high-intensity confined animal feeding operations like this do impact local air quality and have health effects. So how does that factor into?
Yeah, Commissioner Kyle, I completely agree with your statement. But, I mean, this is one of those areas where the, if, if the legislature previously chose not to resource it and we don't have a program in place, the most we can do right now is go to the legislature and say, there's new science on this. This is a public health issue that we believe Oregon should address. Please give us funding, maybe even give us. give us funding, maybe even give us some clear authority to administer a program here. And so I think we're open to conversation with you about whether you want us or others to approach the Legislature and make that ask.
So personally, I think of at least a briefing. So the Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Unit in our area is up at University of Seattle, and I happen to know that Catherine Carr, who is one of the Directors of that unit, has been studying actually the effects of, it's more the cattle, but in kind of that high intensity area, the relationships between ammonia, air pollution, children's asthma, and it's data that would be very relevant to Oregon from that Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Unit. So if the arc is to try to do education as a way, as part of informing the Legislature of current science, I would be happy to make those conclusions. I do.
Yeah. Commissioner, were you finished?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kyle. And we, you and I can talk offline, and I think we'll also talk with Oregon Health Authority about this and see where people want to go with it. I will caution you all, though, that it takes time to work something like this through the Legislature and then get a program in place. And so I don't know what the timing is on these facilities. Number one, and then number two, we also heard some land use issues yesterday and is part of the public comment. And that is, I'm sorry, but that just is not our responsibility. If people want to raise the land use issues, again, there's a way to do that with the Department of Land Conservation and Development in the Legislature and but there's really nothing DEQ can do on that front.
I do appreciate you mentioning that, Director, because it can often be very confusing for the public, right? They they're interested in an event that's taking on, that's going to impact their their world, their community. And so the EQ's permitting authority is sometimes looked to as, oh, well, that's that's where the control can be. But I appreciate you sharing that, you know, really many of these things have to do with land use. And the EQ's authority to permit or not permit something is often constrained. It's not just completely discretionary. So I just think anytime that we can help the public understand, we we completely support them pursuing whatever their perspectives on an issue are, but we also want to help them understand where that effort is best placed. So not to say that DEQ doesn't have a role in this, certainly does. But that's very helpful. And there's so many agencies and different authorities. I think it's it's quite reasonable that sometimes it can be very confusing to your average citizen who who just wants to know who the right people are to talk to. I think Deputy Director Felden, did you have your hand up?
I did, and it was just to go another layer deeper, but I I think we're probably good there, and we can we can look forward to to digging in with some more information as as Commissioner Kyle suggested. So I'll hold there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll go to Commissioner Slusher, and then I have a quick question about the the water or the capital side of the equation. Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you, Chair George. I just wanted to add that in addition to the health impacts, it really seems like this is a pretty clear cut environmental justice concern. And given the state's, you know, growing emphasis on protecting environmental justice, it seems like maybe there should be some additional attention put into this issue. I mean, we heard from some of the commentators yesterday that they didn't have internet access and weren't really sure how they should comment and participate. And it it just raised some some concerns for me. And so I hope that maybe that could at least add some urgency to digging deeper into this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that comment. Yeah. And I think it's it's related to mine as well, right? Folks are interested, folks care. But it can be very a kind of labyrinth like trying to figure out at this the state system and who you talk to and and why. And so to any degree that we can be helpful with that, I think we always should be. So not to go too far down this lane, but you may brief mention a director to these, especially these very large facilities. They're defined as CAFOs until they fall under those types of shared responsibility between DEQ and the Department of Agriculture. For a facility like this, is this the kind of thing where there are standard control measures? Or what? What is the degree of waste management, you know, discretion or authority or approaches that the departments can apply in terms of what it sounded like, at least on this scale, will be a very precedented new source in the community. Maybe people might have had smaller scale operations, but this sound like there'll be three new, very large scale operations. Is there could you spend just a little bit of time talking to us about how that how that will look from the capital permitting perspective?
Yeah, I can. I can at a high level, Chair George. If we're going to go really deep on this, I'd need to get staff who have more expertise here. But at a high level, these facilities as part of their application to the Department of Agriculture and under your rules need to include an animal waste management plan. And the animal waste management plan will lay out the projected volume of waste, the intensity of waste, how it's going to be collected, stored, ultimately managed or disposed of in a way that does not create pollution of either surface water or groundwater. And as you, I think, know, we also have been engaged in an ongoing effort with with Oregon Department of Agriculture around the issue of financial assurance. And what is the risk to a community of a facility starting operation and then going out of business? And so we are is a general matter, working with the Department of Agriculture for large facilities in particular, to make sure that we address that that risk as well before the facility has authorization to begin operating. And then we've also, and I think I may need Deputy Director Felden's help here. I can't remember exactly where we are on our two-stage permitting for CAFOs of stage one being an authorization to begin construction. But then them having to come back and get authorization before they're actually allowed to bring animals onto the facility to make sure that everything's in place, kind of like an occupancy permit in the building. Local building department, you can analogize it to that. You get a building permit, and then you get an occupancy permit. It's the same basic concept that we're bringing to this. Yeah, okay.
And that's in effect now in terms of status. So that would be applied.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Leah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Rossa.
I I I think Director Whitman just hit it. I was really wanting to kind of touch on lessons learned with with the previous mega dairy in Lost Valley around just the the financial assurances through the permitting process before animals are brought onto site.
Understood. Thank you. And I may have cut you off, Director. Did you have something else?
Well, the one other thing I'll mention, we heard from some of the residents concerns about composting. And so if composting is part of the management plan for dealing with poultry waste, that'll be something we look at in terms of potential for water quality impacts. I think they're, you know, they're clearly also concerned about ammonia and potential air quality impacts. And yes, I heard the kind of red flags around environmental justice issues also. So we will be talking with other partners about that. But again, caution folks that you don't put new rules and a new regulatory program in place just by flipping a switch. It's gonna it probably is going to take some form of action by the Legislature for that to occur. And that means we're looking at a year from now, at best, before that starts to be in place.
Understood. Thank you for that. Okay, we had probably better let you continue.
Okay. So I really appreciated all the presentations on the Deschutes yesterday. I know it might have been a little confusing. For some, there was a lot of information presented. And but I think I'm just speaking for myself now. Fundamentally, there is some tension between the objectives of a healthy, vibrant, lower river resident trout and steelhead fishery and the efforts to improve conditions for reintroducing steelhead and Chinook into the upper river. I heard some glimmers of potential areas of agreement, possibly around some of the modifications to operations. And so I think as we go forward on this, we've got the rulemaking that is underway this year on the aquatic life criteria. That's pretty frankly straightforward. And that'll be coming to you in the fall. The real opportunity to think about the 401 Water Quality Certification and the Water Quality Management Plan for Pelton will be later after that. And I think there is already an existing committee that guides the implementation of that plan. I am going to be talking with staff about, is this an area where we think should be thinking about having a somewhat broader collaborative effort to see if there is some common ground here that could be reached between these competing objectives. I'm going to need to hear from the fisheries experts and the dam experts about whether they think there is some space there. But if there is, absolutely, we'll we'll try to see if we can bring people together on that. I also heard a lot of folks talking from perspectives that just, you know, some people were frankly saying you should stop trying to reintroduce fish into the upper river. And I will say publicly, I am not support. I'm not going to be on board with that. It's too important to the overall community and frankly, the Confederated Tribes of the Warm Springs for us to give up on that effort, even if it's been slow going more slowly than some people would have wanted. Just to say a little bit more, some of what I heard was water quality problems in the Lower River aren't just about temperature. They're from the withdrawal of water right at the surface, which has higher levels of nutrients and cyanotoxins, having that get into the river downstream. And so people were implying at least maybe you could draw the water just a little bit lower and avoid some of those impacts, at least to the same degree. So that's, I think, some of the thing that that's the kind of thing I think we want to explore with PGE, with the Warm Springs, with with everybody as we get into that updating of the 401 Water Quality Certification. But I think for now, we've kind of done what we can on this issue in terms of bringing everything to you. It's possible, you know, Deschutes River Alliance has been very active trying to use the court system to accomplish objectives, and they may try to do more of that. And that's their right, and that's fine. But I think we're just going to proceed on the path that we've laid out for you of the updating of the standards and then the work on the updating of the 401 Water Quality Certification. And we certainly will report, you'll you will see the standards in a rulemaking on the 401 modification. That's a DQ action, but we certainly will be reporting to you about what's going on there.
Okay, thank you. And yes, you're quite right. There was a tremendous amount of information, and we certainly came to understand that there's this, there's this balancing tension between interests in different parts of the watershed. And one of the things, though, that I did want to understand a little bit better is, you know, you mentioned the the current 401, and then after standards revision, revisiting the 401. In one of the the comments made had to do with, you know, typically in a 401, you have certain conditions that you say, you know, will not be met or certain levels of degradation that won't be allowed. There was comment that that those conditions had been violated. Is is there anything that that can be done in regard to the current 401 and aspects of of enforcement there? Or is that right back to, you know, compromising one goal to accomplish the other? That's kind of a level of precision that you can't really get to in a presentation like this. But I did want to inquire about the current requirements of the permit.
DEQ's position is that Portland General is currently in compliance with this 401 Water Quality Certificate. And to give you a little more detail, part of the reason for that is that certification in terms of the operative provisions really relies on an annual plan for operations. And it's that plan that they have to comply with. So the plan is designed to meet standards, but in a legal sense, it's the plan that they have to meet, and they've been doing what they've been told in the plan. It's kind of as simple as that. Does that mean the plan might not need to be adjusted to kind of rebalance some of this? That's the modification discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we also heard from Marion Cooper and Mike Eliasen about the Oregon Capital Chronicle article, which in turn was taken from something called the Environmental Integrity Report, which was Washington DC based non-governmental organization that was that issued a report on the 50th anniversary of the Federal Clean Water Act. And, you know, the basic gist of that report was, you've made great progress. There's a ton of work left to do in terms of cleaning up our nation's waterways. So that organization in their report, use some metrics which I think, which which in fairness to the Environmental Integrity Report organization, they were very explicit about the limitations of that information in their report. And the Oregon Capital Chronicle did not include those limitations in their reporting. So for instance, you know, Oregon has the most stream miles in the nation of of waterways that are not meeting standards. So let's dig into that just a little bit. Oregon assesses a much higher percentage of its waterways than I think almost any other state in the nation, number one. So look at Washington, for instance. What I I'm not going to give you exact numbers, but Washington looks at in their assessment report, looks at maybe a tenth of what Oregon does. So right there in terms of stream miles, it's apples and oranges. The second point is our standards are different. Part of that is because we have we have Pacific Coast salmon here in Oregon, so does Washington. And yes, we do have some of the strictest water quality standards in the nation. We're proud of that. We're we're, you know, doing our carrying out our responsibility to protect those uses. Standards in the Midwest and, you know, it again, it's apples and oranges. So the Environmental Integrity Report said that and use some other measures to try to get it, different ways to look at things. And unfortunately, the Capital Chronicle just used it as an opportunity to, in my uh just used it as an opportunity to, in my opinion, um mislead people about where Oregon is at. The last thing I want to say on this and Chair George, you and I have had this conversation many times. We have a lot of work to do in Oregon. I'm not trying to say we don't have a lot of work to do. We do. But it is unfortunate when media don't give an accurate um picture of what that work is and um anyway, so there is a written piece on the director's report, which is kind of sharp and purposely so. Because I'm trying to educate our media um partners uh that they need to be a little bit more careful in their reporting. And um so that's really all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you, Director. And if if I may, I would just like to add that I can understand from a certain lens um the people being concerned, there's this perception that, um you know, a water is in bad shape, but we're not taking care of them. Uh you know, I I think you're right. I think anybody that that has spent any time trying to understand the water quality issues in Oregon will know that we we do a tremendous amount of of monitoring and studying um compared to to most other states. We have many partners that participate in that in Oregon as well, in addition to just state agencies. Um but we should never shy away from what the best data tells us ever. We should look that in the face and we should tell, allow it to inform what we need to do to protect our precious Oregon resources. And as you say, we do have more protective standards than many, but that's because Oregon resources require uh our protection and restoration. Our salmonid populations, our public health uh deserves that level of protection. And so um I appreciate the sensitivity to the issue. But it for from my perspective, that means uh you know, full steam ahead, we do have a lot of work to do. Uh but we should never never shy away from looking at the best data and sharing it with the public. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Director. I one one last thing on this and that, you know, there have been a series of articles, not just the Capitol Chronicle about crises in our our state's waters. Um we had the Lake Abert story. There's um Summer Lake article recently in the uh in OPB. There will be, I'm as we head into another drought year, there are going to be more articles. Um things are not good in the clamath and um and you know, we continue to see big alcohol blooms in the climate here in downtown Portland. Um we continue to be concerned about drinking water supplies and alcohol. We are in a climate crisis. Um a lot of our water quality concerns and the issues that people are seeing are because of climate change and so saying that we're not meeting water quality standards is true. Um but it again, if people could put this in the context of this is another reason why we need to care about the climate crisis that we're in. That would be a heck of a lot more constructive in my mind.
Thank you, Director.
Yep. Okay. Uh Cessara, which stands for the Coastal Zone Amendments and Reauthorization Act of I'm not going to get the year right, but um a long time ago, twenty twenty five years ago. Uh so one of this federal legislation um created an add on to the Federal Clean Water Act for coastal states and and uh requires states to have a coastal non-point source water quality control program, and it requires uh those programs to be approved by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency and um uh National Marine Fisheries Service or NOAA. And Oregon's program um in response to a petition from environmental, an environmental organization was disapproved uh back in twenty fifteen, I believe, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And the the result of that was the loss of funding uh from EPA and NOAA funding to DEQ for some of our non ironically, uh loss of funding for some of our non-point source programs and also loss of funding to uh the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development for past grants to communities on the Oregon coast uh to do planning work around um ecosystem protection. So uh it was noted, I think by Mike Eliasen yesterday with the Forest Accord. The reason for disapproval of Oregon's program, the leading reason for disapproval was uh the federal agencies um finding that Oregon's um Forest Practice Act regulations and related non-regulatory programs on forest lands were not adequate to meet the standards for approval of Cessara programs. With the enactment of the Forest Accord legislation in the short session and the rulemaking that is underway and required to be completed by the end of this year by the Board of Forestry, we believe the significant concerns or findings made by EPA and NOAA have been largely, if not entirely addressed. So we agree with my what Mike Eliasen said. And we are in um serious conversation with EPA and NOAA right now about a submittal to the federal agency seeking reapproval of Oregon's um non-point source uh pro coastal non-point source program. So um we've been careful here not to make this conversation around the Forest Accords be about funding. This isn't about a couple of Oregon agencies wanting to just get more funding. This is about doing the right thing for our coastal watersheds. So um that said, with this effort now appearing to be um headed toward a a good conclusion, we think now is the time to go ahead and and seek those um reauthorizations and I would expect later this year, we'll be making submissions to the two federal agencies. It does have to be approved both by EPA and by NOAA. Be happy to answer any questions about that.
I'm just I'll comment that uh very, very glad to see it. It's needed to be addressed. Uh it has been. I certainly hope that those consultations go well and that we we do demonstrate that we are going to be sufficiently protective of our critically important coastal watersheds. Um so hope to to look to hear about a successful reapplication. Commissioner Slush.
Um, thank you, Chair. I was just curious if we get approval from the federal agencies, does that mean we will the funding will be renewed automatically?
Yes, it does.
Great.
Yep. Okay, uh
Twenty minutes, Vice Chair Brasso.
And and Director, just to be explicit, it's we are now, we believe we're in compliance or we're meeting the Cessara requirements because of the Forest Accord.
Uh Vice Chair Brasso, I think I would say largely because of the Forest Accord. I think there are other pieces um it that will be included in the submittal that we make to EPA and NOAA that that are kind of a package. Um so it's not only the Forest Accords. Uh it will probably also include your new memorandum of agreement between DEQ and forestry uh and the system that we have put in place and are now implementing for completion of the TMDLs. So it's it will include that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, uh internal audit. Um and Commissioner Kyle is Chair of the Internal Audit Committee. If you want to add anything to what I'm going to talk about here, please feel free. I'm not going to go into great detail, but um I do want to report on um two things that Valerie Wickland, our internal audit auditor, has been spending quite a bit of time on. She's been assisted actually by um audit professionals at Portland State uh on a consulting basis have been helping her uh as well on this. So two areas to talk about. One is um the uh clean vehicle rebate program. The uh clean vehicle rebate program includes a component called the Charge Ahead Program, which is uh essentially a higher level of incentive for low and moderate income households. And um the rules that you adopted temporary rules this past fall, they're coming to you as permanent rules proposed in May for adoption will will make rebate, continue to make rebates of up to seventy five hundred dollars per vehicle for low and moderate income households. And just to give you a sense, a household of four, I believe the income level to to qualify for charge ahead is actually a hundred and four thousand doll a hundred and four thousand per year. So it's uh you know, there are probably a fair number of households that can qualify for this um higher level of incentive and uh under federal incentives that are available, at least through the end of this year um for at least some uh clean vehicles. Ones that haven't reached certain levels of total sales, which includes, for instance, the Nissan Leaf. You can get an additional seventy five hundred dollar incentive. So if I'm looking at, again, I'm I'm not advocating by Nissan Leafs, but their price is pretty competitive right now. Their prices are around thirty thousand or a little less with a fifteen thousand dollar rebate. Um and with range, you know, their range is now significantly greater than it used to be also. So coming to the internal audit part of this, we have struggled right from the outset of this program. How do we verify household income? And the IRS doesn't share tax returns. And so we have, we've struggled to be able to figure out how to um verify income. We've used surrogate um measures, if you will. So for instance, if if a household qualifies for food stamps, um that can be a way of also qualifying for the Charge Ahead Program. But this has been a struggle for for a couple of years now. We are I think either signed or just about to sign an agreement with the Oregon Department of Revenue, which under very tight controls will allow um verification of household income using Oregon Department of Revenue um data. So this problem has been solved, but one of the concerns raised by our internal auditor was just not being able to verify um uh household income. And to be clear, our contractor did have an arrangement with the IRS to do income verification. But we weren't allowed to double check that. Only so that was the audit problem, if you will. So that was one thing I wanted to report on, and I I'm emphasizing that a little bit because there's going to be more money coming into that program, as you heard about earlier. And Oregon is really leading the nation in our the degree to which we have and which we will be targeting lower income households for this program. So it's very important to me and our staff that we get this right. Um and that the public has confidence that we are getting these incentives to households that uh the legislature intended to get them to. So I'm I'm telling you, I'm feeling good about this now. The internal audit work was helpful in in pushing us to make sure we really got this piece of the program nailed down. Any questions about that before I go on? Okay, the second piece um is maybe a little bit more significant. Uh we have or Oregon DQ has a couple of programs where the programs are paid for through something called cost recovery. Essentially, we do work on a project and we bill typically the property owner um or uh another responsible party for our cost in overseeing that work. This is um there are two programs in particular. One is emergency response. So when a truck goes off the road and spills diesel, which happens multiple times every week um in Oregon, unfortunately. Uh and there's a cleanup and DQ has costs associated with that cleanup. Usually it's the contractor who does the work. But we may go inspect it um depending on the size of the spill or if it's a really big spill, we may take over the work ourselves and and hire our own contractors and do it. So we have to recover our costs. Same thing in the cleanup program. It's not spills, but um you know, your neighborhood gas station that had a leaky tank and um uh needs to to do a a cleanup project to to deal with contamination. We'll have inspection costs. Sometimes we'll again take over a project and and do it ourselves and have costs. Our cost recovery systems in the agency have not been working well for over twenty years. And um there are some legal problems, uh maybe problems with some of the underlying statutes in terms of cost recovery. Our ability to really go after responsible parties um is limited uh to situations where the amount the liability and the amount owed is what's called liquidated. That means there's been some form of due process to determine, yes, in fact, this person is liable. And this is the amount they owe. And without that process having occurred, our ability to collect on those debts is weak. Um so the legal problems here um didn't get addressed. They've been, they've been out there for some period of time. And so this internal audit work that Valerie Wickland has done along with staff have really uncovered uh assist systemic problem here at the agency that needs to get fixed. And um we we currently have people working on potential fixes. Some of those fixes um probably more maybe able to be done without legislation. Some of them might require legislation. And so we we probably will have a placeholder piece of legislation on this. Um but I want you to know that this is being taken seriously. It um it's really important for the long term health of the emergency response program and the cleanup program that we get this fixed and resolved. Uh and you know, we have made repeated attempts in the emergency response program to seek general fund dollars from the legislature. I we need to get this this part fixed before we can really ask for general fund dollars. I mean, the the whole polluter pay uh principle applies here. And if we're not doing what we need to do to make that work, um I'm not fully comfortable you know, asking uh Oregon taxpayers generally to foot the bill. We've got it. We've got to try to make this work. So uh this is good work. This is exactly why we want an internal audit function um is to to uh bring these sorts of issues to light and get the attention they need and start putting a fix in place. So questions about that?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Um all right, uh I am going to talk about, I'm going to kind of shift back and talk about electric vehicles a little bit. Um I'm not going to talk too much more about the funding, the fairly significant additional funding that we've gotten for this program and we're we're continuing to look for other funding sources for incentives, both for light duty and this was mentioned, um we're also thinking about if if we were able to get incentives for medium and heavy duty uh vehicles, where would we start? What would the top priorities be there? While we're working on that, uh California Air Resources Board CARB is working on the next round of legal requirements for uh manufacturers in terms of minimum sales levels of clean vehicles uh in California. And you'll recall under the Federal Clean Air Act. in California. And you'll recall, under the Federal Clean Air Act, other states are authorized to either adopt the federal standards for vehicle emissions or California's. California is expected to adopt rules later this summer, which at a high level are likely to require on the order of 60% of new car sales to be electric by 2030. And that 60% is either battery, fully battery electric vehicles or, and/or plug-in hybrid. So this includes things like the Toyota RAV4 right now has a plug-in hybrid, which will go, you know, 25 or 50 or 75 miles on electric. And then if somebody needs to go further, it switches to a gasoline engine. So those are included in this percentage requirement. And I bring this up because in the Oregon sales figures, we're actually, the plug-in hybrids are doing really well right now. Everybody, when people think about electrics, we all see a lot of Teslas on the road. I just want to make the point, this isn't about just Teslas. This is about these plug-in hybrids, which are selling really well in Oregon. It's also about your Nissan Leaf. It's, and we're seeing more sales in Oregon, actually non-Tesla part of the market. And that may be in part because of our incentive program hitting some of those households who aren't in the market for Tesla. They're in the market for a Nissan Leaf or something a little bit more affordable. The CARB requirements, 60% in 2030, 100% in 2035. I am, Ali Marzakalili, our air quality administrator, and I are going to bring, are going to begin a rulemaking for Oregon to adopt CARB standards, the Advanced Clean Cars Two standards, that we will bring to you, I expect by the close of this calendar year. The state of Washington is doing the same thing. They, they already have started a rulemaking to set a requirement for 100% clean cars by 2035. So again, you're seeing California, Oregon, Washington, you're actually seeing British Columbia and Canada, all creating a really strong market for clean cars on the west coast of North America. So that's, this is, we see a clear pathway to getting to what the goal was in the Climate Protection Program rules that you adopted in December. That goal was, I think I'm going to have this right, 45% by 2035, I believe, might, maybe it was 50, I've forgotten now. But with what we're talking about in terms of manufacturers' requirements for new vehicle sales and the Clean Fuels Program, extension that's going to be coming to you also later this year, that includes a significant push on renewable diesel for rural parts of our state, those things are going to get us to those limits that were in the Climate Protection Program rules that you adopted in December. So we are seeing a clear pathway, particularly in transportation, to how to get to where we need to get to by 2035, and not just for Oregon, but for the entire west coast of North America.
This is very exciting, very exciting news. Vice Chair Brassa.
Likewise, I agree. This is exciting to see, just so that I understand the timing, because I know a lot of our timing oftentimes related to vehicle standard, vehicle emission standards is due to sort of the, the, there's a certain lag time, right? There's a certain buffer time, a lead time that we need to give from manufacturers. And is that, just so I understand, sort of the, is that the reason that it's important for us to move within this calendar year is to make sure that we're able to give that, that appropriate lead time for manufacturers to set their standards in place?
Yeah, Vice Chair Brassa, that's exactly right. The current clean car standards go through 2026 and the 2026 model year. And so these are new requirements that would start to apply, I think, in 2026 actually, and then continue on through 2035. Yeah, we need, we collectively, not just Oregon, but all of us need to give the manufacturers enough lead time so they can build this into their production plants. And that's, that's multiple years.
Great. And when did California, just so I know, when did California approve those? Or are they currently in?
They have not been approved yet. They will be approved this summer, hopefully on the earlier part of the summer, because we want to get our rulemaking going just as soon as we can.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I'm going to note in the written director's report, under the section two, which is air quality, there's a grouping of items that are all around environmental justice work, equity mapping. We're seeking competitive grants from EPA to assist communities with community scale, air monitoring, new development of tools. This, this grant that we got several years ago on diesel particulate matter impacts and ways of addressing that and kind of the interface between some of what I was just talking about with clean vehicles and diesel emissions. So I have not seen the report yet of PSU's work on the diesel grant, but I hope to get briefed on it here in the near future. And then we likely probably will provide a briefing for the commission as well on that. Okay. I think I'm, again, I'm going to leave the rest of the discussion around environmental justice and equity mapping, probably more to the May commission meeting, unless there are particular questions that people have right now. And Chair George, I haven't forgotten about our earlier dialogue about some interface between DEQ Health Authority and tribal nations on the equity mapping tool work that EPA is doing.
Great. And, you know, similarly to a previous comment, I think this is all another place where knowing what types of data sets, whether it's about health or other exposures would be valuable to be included, is the kind of direct call to tribes and Indian tribal health services that could be facilitated. But if we know what types of data would enrich the analysis tool, we certainly have networks to try to see if that could be provided. But I suspected it would take that extra step.
I can't hold myself back from mentioning that the draft EPA tool that has, was released a couple of weeks ago, did not include any metrics around the race. And this has been fairly widely reported in the media. So I'm not saying anything that isn't understood out there, but I, I will say, just speaking for myself, I, I know the lawyers are probably telling EPA that there may be risk associated with that. I understand that. But we've got to figure out a way to address some of the metrics around historic inequities to particular populations. Yes, this is about health and health burden and pollution burden, but it, it's also about racial equity. I'm sorry. And so we, we would love to have that conversation with you and other, and tribal nations about what EPA is proposing as well.
Great. Stephanie, perhaps you can help us have a follow-up conversation and get that on the calendar quite soon. You're absolutely right, Director. It absolutely is about environmental justice. And Commissioner Kyle could also, I know, point us to sources where it's also about good science and following the data and looking at what it tells you. There are results that I'm sure she's much more familiar with than I am that are unambiguous. And in fact, a couple of them are also referenced in the director's report about impacts associated with diesel and other impacts. So yes, let's, let's follow up shortly. But in the meantime, I think Commissioner Slusher has a comment followed by Vice Chair Brassa.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question about the air pollution burden tool that the agency is developing. And you know, in the written report that you're seeking internal feedback on the tool this month. And I was just wondering if that was something that we could review or would have an opportunity to review that?
Absolutely, Commissioner Slusher. It is. And this is before this tool starts being used, it needs engagement with the communities that may be affected by it as well. So this is a very early iteration of something that will need engagement with communities and with, and we'd be happy to bring it to the commission and get your feedback on it as well.
Vice Chair.
It was, I don't know if I have much of a comment other than, sure, that's disappointing that race wouldn't be an explicit criteria within the tool, that they'd be, in part because it's an evaluation and to understand how race plays out is a critical, it's critical. So I understand sort of where lawyers will get nervous, but it's an important part of the conversation to say, our environmental justice is falling across these lines and on these bases. Because as much as, as much as income and poverty are closely associated, that there, there are things that aren't always that way. And it's important to be able to parse that out that way. Not, not to say that it dictates the actions that are taken, but just to be clear that for our ability to do that analysis, it feels like, it feels like a no-brainer at this point.
I completely agree with that. And to anybody with the federal government who might ever listen to this, it's incredible to me, that here, part of this work is implementing the Federal Civil Rights Act and Title VI of the Federal Civil Rights Act. And we have, we have a responsibility as a recipient of those federal funds to make sure that we're not having disparate impact on the basis of race or ethnicity or, you know, a variety of other types of characteristics. So to say we can't have a tool that allows us to look at racial characteristics of communities that were affecting by our decisions. It just, anyway, so this is, but this is also a good example of, you know, so we have EPA doing this at a federal level, and that's fine. But we are going to have our own state tool. And, you know, we may come to a different conclusion than the federal government came to on this. It's not just a DEQ decision. It's going to need to be DEQ and the Health Authority and several other agencies. But we may well come to a different place than EPA.
All right.
Hey, so water quality. Just first of all, a quick note on litigation that I think was reported to you a couple of times. We've had this court case challenging the Klamath TMDL in play for, I think, almost two years now, maybe even a little more than two years. And we had an adverse decision from the Marion County Circuit Court remanding the TMDL to DEQ to reconsider a couple of things, including how we treated irrigation districts as responsible parties for implementing the TMDL. So we are currently in discussion with our attorneys about how to respond to that remand, whether we appeal the court decision, whether we go ahead and make some adjustments to the TMDL, or whether we send the TMDL to you all to adopt as a rule. We haven't, those are all possible pathways going forward. This issue around what are the responsibilities of irrigation districts in implementing the TMDL is a bigger issue. It's not just a Klamath issue. Irrigation districts are public entities under Oregon law. They have statutory responsibilities and statutory authorities. So more to come on that. But in the meantime, the rest of the TMDL continues to be implemented. The other thing the court found was that it was improper for DEQ to base the TMDL in part on water quality standards adopted by California that are applicable at the border where the Klamath River goes from Oregon into California. And I will just say, I completely disagree with the court opinion. And on that, we, again, will either appeal it or we will bring it forward in a different way. But we, we, you know, whenever we're dealing with border waters, Columbia, Snake, I would say even the Deschutes, where we have the Confederated Tribes, we do have to be respectful of those water quality standards in our neighboring nations or states. Anyway, it was frustrating, but not unexpected. On a better note, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has issued a draft decision on dam removal in the Klamath River and is proposing to approve the project to remove the four Pacific Core dams on the Klamath. It's in public comment right now. Oregon will be submitting comments to FERC next week. They will then issue a final environmental impact statement and make a final decision. We expect probably in July, August timeframe this summer. There's a little other regulatory work that needs to be completed with US Army Corps of Engineers that could drag things out a little bit longer. But we, we're looking at having all the final federal regulatory decisions made by this fall and a final decision by the state of Oregon, state of California, Pacific Core, and the dam removal entity KRC about whether or not to move forward. And, you know, that decision is because we have a limited budget for this project. And so being sure that we've got sufficient resources to carry out the project is essentially that last call, if you will. So that decision will be made sometime this summer or early fall. And right now, everything looks like it's on track for dam removal. FERC was not able to, it doesn't look like FERC is going to be able to act fast enough for dam removal to start in full in 2023, because the lead time for such a big project is just, there's not enough time to mobilize everything. So there probably will be some, some work that starts this year and next preparatory to dam removal. But the big slug of dam removal work is likely to happen in early 2024. So that's good news. I'm going to mention just two more things briefly, and then just see if the commission has any questions about other things going on in the agency. But next renewables is a very large renewable fuel, particularly diesel, refining operation that is proposed for the Port Westward area in Columbia County, currently in public comment on their air quality permit. The county has issued a final land use decision for that facility approving it. So that appears to be moving forward. It does have significant opposition from some of the local community, including some of the local farmers. So that'll be coming before DEQ for a decision on the air permit here in the next couple of months. I think that's really all I want to say about it, other than to just note it would bring a fairly significant amount of renewable diesel production into Oregon, as opposed to importing that renewable diesel from out of state. And so, yes, people have concerns about whether this is the right location, but And so, yes, people have concerns about whether this is the right location, but we, we are trying to promote more renewable diesel production in Oregon, and it is an important piece, particularly for rural areas of the state in terms of transitioning to, to a cleaner transportation system. Okay, then down in Eugene, West Eugene, the JH Baxter facility, we've reported on that previously to you, but just a little bit of an update. There've been a series of meetings with the community to, to provide information to the community and hear their input on next steps. DEQ continues to work with the Health Authority and EPA on, on the next steps, which are mainly focused on sampling to make sure we have completely defined areas of high contamination around, this is dioxin. So we have discovered one other area of contamination in a city-owned park, Trainsong Park, that is near, but not right adjacent to some of the homes with higher levels. And now we are working to make sure we fully define that and delineate that area of contamination. The city is closed much of the park to public access until we make sure that things are, are safe for the community. Parts that have been reopened, actually, based on, on some of the testing most recently. So I think that's it for the director's report for this session. There's a lot going on. We've got a lot of both policy stuff in flight. We've got a lot of recruiting or transitioning out of the pandemic period. And then yeah, there's a lot going on in the agency. So happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Slusher.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about the Trainsong Park contamination. If I recall correctly from our previous meeting, you noted that it wasn't clear whether that contamination was actually coming from JH Baxter or coming from another source. So I was wondering if you were doing any sampling in other areas of Eugene, like if it's possible that that contamination occurred because of the trains going through the park? Like, are you doing any sampling in other areas where trains might have, where the train tracks are?
I am going to, we've got Deputy Director Felden here, who's been a little bit more involved in this than I have, so I'm going to see if yeah, can you answer that question?
Sure. Chair George, Commissioner Slusher, right now, what the staff are doing with Trainsong Park, as you said, yeah, it is not clear where that contamination may have come from, and they, and they really need to do more work to understand why there are pockets of contamin, you know, that the park is not uniformly contaminated is, is what they're learning currently. There are just a few pockets, and as Director Whitman said, in fact, the there, there are large swaths of the park have been reopened, because the sampling found that it's really just in a few pockets. And so I don't want to speculate in terms of, of what that tells us, but I think it tells us that we need to look more into what is the fingerprint of what they're finding, and then what would we potentially associate that with, if it's even possible to associate it? I will say, if there were, i- i- if the, if the pockets where we're doing more sampling because they've found contamination indicate that there are other residences near those parts of the park that would need to be sampled as well, we would definitely move into, into those areas. So it's still in investigative mode, I think I would say.
Great, thanks. Definitely a very full director's report. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, I will look to follow up with you, Director, on the the model and screening exercises and outreach to tribes. Do we have anything else that we need to cover today before we finish? All right, I am not hearing any. I would entertain a motion that, oh, here we go, Vice Chair Ross.
Just, just to hope that, I, I hope that we, while we have this moment, we get to schedule one of our next meetings in person.
That is a very good point and something that we've been discussing, and we need to, to prepare for accordingly to, as part of our big transition back to, to life. Director, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Chair George. We have, we have been talking about potentially having the next meeting of the Environmental Quality Commission be an in-person meeting. I think we, if we were going to do that, we probably still would want to set it up in, in a way that individuals wanting to attend virtually would still be able to do that. So that that probably is going to constrain to some degree where we could have an in-person meeting, because we need to have the equipment to, to be able to do both. But we have started to talk about this. It could be potentially here at DEQ headquarters, we have a large conference room on the third floor, maybe at Portland State where we've met previously. We could have that sort of equipment. So we're starting to explore possible venues, but I guess I would just say if there are commissioners who are not comfortable with an in-person meeting at the next meeting, which is, I think, like, May nineteenth and twentieth, somewhere around there, please contact me or Stephanie and let us know that. And I think otherwise, we are going to start planning to have the next meeting be an in-person meeting. I'll also note, Chair George, I've talked with you about this. I want to try to as part of that, organize an opportunity to thank former Commissioner Mosby for his service, and so we will also expect to have that be part of the agenda one way or another as well.
Good. I hope, I hope that happens. Yes, and I completely agree with you. We have learned by necessity that having at least an online option or going to hybrid meetings provides an opportunity for so many more people to participate than if we only have in-person meetings. And so I would, I definitely support our continuing that process moving forward and and because we do want people from all around the state to have access to this process, including one of our commissioners, right, who has to travel a very long distance, I think maintaining that flexibility will facilitate people's ability to participate in these meetings, while at the same time, we, we have that value for our face-to-face interactions. And so I look forward to, to working on planning these going forward. All right, anything else?
No, thank you, Chair George.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. This is Commissioner seconded. Well done, well done. Do we have anybody opposed to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned at twelve twenty-five. Thank you, everyone, very much for your time today. We all appreciate it. And take care until next time. Thank you.